So I'm gonna go ahead and call the Wednesday, September 28th, 2022 Nottingham Planning Board Meeting to Order before we begin the public hearings and everything. I'll go around the room, starting with Marv Ray.
Andrew Jones, alternate.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Gary Anderson.
John Moore.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Sherri Sandler.
Claire Haiti, SRPC Sabres.
Jumped right in. Ms. Jones will be seated and voting for Ms. Anderson tonight, and Mr. Davies will be seated and voting for Mr. McKinnon tonight. So we have a couple of items on the agenda. We'll take the cases in order. Both of these are continuations of public hearings. The first is case number 22-009-SUB, application from Robin Kamau requesting a two-lot subdivision, property located at 176 Stevens Hill Road, identified as tax map 49 lot four, and Stevens Hill Road is designated as a scenic road. Anybody?
So the applicant emailed me and asked to continue until October 12th.
Okay. Yep. So alls I would recommend is any motion to continue that we continue to make sure that any new deliverables are brought to us at least one week prior for review.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to continue case number 22-009-SUB to October 12th, 7:00 PM.
A second?
That's a motion by Mr. Anderson and a second by Ms. Mooney. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Seven zero. And again, if anybody was here for that case, no new notifications go out for butter notifications. It would just be on the agenda for October 12th. So just keep an eye on that agenda, please. Alright. Next item on the agenda is case number 22-011-SUB. That's an application from Jones and Beach Engineering on behalf of Jim Rosborough, requesting an 11-lot subdivision. The property is located on Moores Road, identified as tax map 72 lot 13-1.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. This is a proposed 11-lot open space residential subdivision on Moores Road. Since last meeting, we did have a public site walk with the board and the public to review the site. The board asked specifically to review an area of wetlands on the corner of Moores Road. It took a couple of weeks, but our wetland scientist was able to get out there. Our wetland scientist on this is Jamie Long with GZA, and he confirmed that that area is not a wetland. So we didn't have time to resubmit a complete package in a timely manner, but I was able to put together a revised yield plan and a C2. Hopefully that we can look at that tonight and discuss and move the project ahead further. I know there won't be any decisions to be made, but we could at least review and discuss.
Actually, I'm gonna give you a little small one.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guyer, is this gonna be projected on the...
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you, for the audience.
So at the last meeting, there were a couple of questions regarding the yield plan. We thought we would update that and give you a look at our proposed yield plan. We have updated to include the areas of steep slopes, which are shown with the gray hatch, and we've also included the 30,000-square-foot building envelopes. They're the darker, kind of a striped hatch. We did revise the yield to relocate one of the lots from Moores Road to Jamsa Road. The area that was in question, kind of in the corner of Moores Road, is not wet, but we thought it made more sense to show it up off of Jamsa Road. So we also revised the open space subdivision layout, C2, specifically based upon some of the input from the board. And if you don't mind going to sheet C2. So we did shift one of the lots from the corner of Moores Road and add it to Jamsa, so we now have two lots off of Jamsa. We also reduced some of the lot sizes to more closely match the regulations. We will still be asking for a conditional use permit for the, I guess, oversized open space lot sizes. We also did receive road agent comments to the board. Basically, I have two comments. The first comment was regarding the stormwater calculations and culvert sizing. We don't typically complete stormwater calculations for single-family residential where there is no road construction, so we would ask for board input on the road agent's suggestion. And the second comment from the road agent was that he believes road improvements are warranted. So we looked at it, and by my count, there will be about 46 homes that utilize Moores Road. Per-year subdivision regulations that would tip us basically from a minor to a major road, local road, it's right in that area. I think the cutoff was 40, and we're at 46 to go to a major. The town standards for a minor road is 18 feet wide, and a major road is 20 feet wide. The existing road, by my measurement, varies between 17 and 20 foot, with the majority of it around 18, and actually a little bit over 18. As you guys know, the applicant recently completed upgrades to the road in order for it to be accepted by the board of selectmen. So if the board is requesting improvements per the road agent's advice, then we're hoping to get more input as to what improvements are required, if what that he thinks. I actually emailed the road agent. I didn't hear back yet, so I don't know if he has to be directed by the board or whatever. So we do need to know what improvements would be required, if there are ones that are required, and we need to determine what the applicant's required portion of that improvement would be. We also been in contact with the fire chief regarding the cisterns. I think after his discussion, our discussion was that we only needed one. If we had one lot off of Jamsa, we would put it on Moores Road. We actually kind of show it on this plan and in this location, kind of between the two sections of houses. I do need to discuss with him if we put two houses off of Jamsa, if he's gonna require a cistern up there as well. So I do have some more input to gain from him. We do have to go to Raymond for this project. We're kind of caught in a quandary where they didn't think we had to notify a Butters, and then at the last minute, they determined that we did. So we're submitting tomorrow for that, and we'll be on the next agenda.
And that's for both Moores Road and Jamsa?
Well, they look at the access, because our access is through Raymond.
Right, but for both roads, right?
Yeah, I don't know what they'll want to look at, but yes.
Yeah, just wanna make sure, obviously, that if it's been pushed on you, that the notice goes out to both sides, obviously, because I know that the talk was a lot about Moores Road, but Jamsa's also impacted since the access for those two are there.
So with that, we can tackle anything that the board would like to.
Right, thank you. So I know these are new tonight, so we obviously haven't had much of a chance to review them.
Sure.
It's live to us now, so if anything jumps out to anybody, please speak towards that. I know in the minutes, I had kind of like a list of items on the prior. Could possibly bring those up? Sorry, something did not bring up today. One of the questions before, I know, was the intermittent perennial stream wasn't shown on here. Now, it'd be impacted by our stream overlay ordinance. In my mind, it's somewhere near where that cistern is being proposed. Is that...
So the wetland scientist didn't pick it up as intermittent, so I will have him reevaluate. You know, there's specific criteria for that and make sure it meets it, but it would be in the area of the, basically, the culvert that's coming down. It's to the, I guess, to the south of the existing culvert where the cistern is going.
Yeah, next to proposed lot eight, I believe, right? Between that and where the cistern is at?
Correct.
I think that's shown on DBS maps as well, and that's in a couple of ours. Just pull up the minutes, so we can kind of touch on a bunch of, see if all the other items that we had kind of looked at. And so the reconfiguration, you know, I think you've addressed a lot of what we were hearing on the sidewalk, you know, the access and putting a lot in between what's currently lot eight and 10 on map 72, putting an access in there and putting a house behind them. You know, I know that wasn't looked upon very favorably, especially with the slope that was there. So is that where you said the wetland scientist went back out and didn't see any wetlands?
Yes, sir. That's where we had talked about on the sidewalk. They went out and specifically double-checked it.
Yeah, yes, I think that swages a lot of possible concern. I know there's still proposed lot nine that would still be behind a house, but looks like you factored the house kind of further back, away from, as well as the well we proposed, away from the current houses.
Yeah, and we think that they'll wanna kind of look over the, I don't wanna call it a pond back there, the water back there, so they will probably orient it in such a manner.
The only thing with those, if possible, it'd be great to just get like the proposed driveway locations staked out, just because I know Jamsa Trail, when you drive that, it's right after the, kind of a curve and a hill. So I'm not certain where those would be if proposed lot 11 is further, seems like it's further away from that sightline issue. Just looking at the plans.
Yeah, I think they're at the crest of that hill, so sightline's about as good as it's gonna get, but we can stake it out.
Yeah, it just helps, that also helps the road agent get an idea, or the building inspector, too, if they're gonna run into a problem with driveway permits when they come up. And it looks like on the yield plan, I know this was a concern before about, it seemed like the yield might have been a bit high. It looks like this has been revisited. It looks like lot seven would only exist if there was a filling of wetlands, and then also crossing steep slopes for the driveway. So that lot would still be, in my mind, a little bit problematic.
I guess my take on that is, yes, there is a small area of wetland fill for that lot, but this is 11 lots that you're getting, no new road development, one area of small wetland impact. I mean, how often do we see that in Nottingham, where you get 11 lots for a very tiny, I mean, and we're not proposing the actual impact, but if it had to go as a standard lot or standard construction, that's a pretty small impact compared to most that you'll see for 11-lot subdivisions.
We'll open the public hearing in a minute. We'll let the board finish the discussion, and then we'll open the public hearing back up to get, so if you don't mind, I'll just touch upon the list that I had from before. So you've addressed... No, I can see it from here. From all the building envelopes, so it looks like you've gone through that, so we will just take a look at it again to make sure that that's there. Confirm your wetland setbacks, which I believe you just mentioned that has been redone. Again, there's no, we'd have to make sure whatever plans we get in front of us as we move forward, have that wetland scientist stamp on them. Each 4K area has to have the two test bits, which I'm sure, I know you had them on the prior, so that would be just an item for the next time. Can you scroll down, Kevin? Thanks. That's enough. Change permit, we'd have to talk about that. You already confirmed, I think you were gonna add a note about the land on the other opposite side, I think west side of Jamsa Trail, that, you know, was just proposed, kind of becomes part of the...
The right-of-way.
Yep. And then you were gonna double-check the calculations for the open space and make sure that more than 50% was buildable? I think you've done that. And then, have you had a chance to meet with the Nottingham Conservation Commission?
We have now. We wanted to make sure we got the wetlands correct, and we double-checked it, so that the conditional use permit for the wetland buffer impact that we're proposing and meeting with the conservation commission is next on our agenda.
Okay. And the grading and erosion plan, I think we generally have that as required. I can't remember if there was a waiver for that or not. There's no stormwater structures intended at this time. No underground utilities would be required. No, we've mentioned that. Can you scroll down a little bit more, Kevin, please? Thanks. Okay, yeah, I think there's still a few items on there, but I think those are, we've already talked about those. Is there any further discussion by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I do have a question. I'm a little confused. I thought when we went on the sidewalk, and according to the maps at that time, that there was only gonna be one lot on Jamsa.
Correct. At that time, we were only proposing one lot on Jamsa.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Well, so...
Where the change came about?
The change kind of came because of the sidewalk, really, because there was a good pushback from the Butters regarding that lot that was in the corner, basically of Moores Road. We may have to go back and propose that again, depending on what the fire chief indicates, because it's not worth putting another cistern in on Jamsa to move that lot. But if we can move that lot without having to put another cistern in, and we can put it off of Jamsa, then I think that would be better for everyone concerned.
So you just rule out sprinklers in the house, right?
The fire chief will oftentimes, especially where there's, on that side of things, where it's two proposed lots, usually the way he's forwarded prior request was, you know, in lieu of a cistern, he requests that sprinklers be provided for the...
Yeah, and we can look into that. The applicant isn't going to be the builder, so I'll have to discuss with him and see what he thinks about putting that restriction on. And maybe for Jamsa, that's a good alternative than the cistern.
But you can put the expense of the homeowner.
Exactly.
I was just wondering how we're looking at the wetlands in our driest season and determining that they're not there.
Yeah. Did you want to speak towards that, Mr. Guyer?
I didn't catch it.
Jerry, this is our driest season, and the scientist is out there looking at the wetlands.
The season doesn't really matter for the wetland scientist. They look at the soils, the vegetation, and I'm not a wetland scientist, but, so they have to have both of those items to be a wetland. And the guy that's doing this for us is actually the guy that teaches everybody in the state how to do this, so he very well understands that...
The whole flooding issue in that area?
Yeah, and just because an area floods does not mean it's wetlands. I mean, I'm not saying that this area does or doesn't flood, because I haven't been there when it was a wet air time, but that doesn't make it a wetland. It has to have, you know, certain criteria that are listed. They double check, you know, he went and did it once, and he went back and double-checked just to make sure, and it's not a wetland.
It would be advantageous to you or the builder as well to know if it floods in that area, if you're gonna put a house there and...
And right now, we're not proposing to put a house there.
That was more specifically the lot that had been proposed down the right corner?
Correct.
So back again where the very steep slope happened to be kind of the boundary of it. So that one, is that the one that... And now, the proposed, both of them proposed yield plan, there's nothing proposed over there, as well as in the proposed open space version. You've removed that lot in lieu of placing it on Jamsa.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's just a trail.
No, it's a road.
Considered a real...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Jamsa was, I believe, accepted as a town road as well.
Yeah, I think last year.
As is, if I remember correctly.
So I had a question about the, that leftover piece from the north side of Jamsa. It'll be made part of the right-of-way.
That's our intent.
So if it's part of the right-of-way, and it's now a town road, does that become town of land, or who maintains that slipper?
Just like any right-of-way. The road will still be maintained by the town, and the right-of-way is, it's still a right-of-way, it's not, and so it's owned by, in this case, if it was reverted back to private land, if the road was ever discontinued, it would all go back to the owners of basically the open space, the homeowner association in this case. I don't know if that answered your question?
I guess my question was more just about long-term maintenance of it. You know, is it, is there anything that the town needs to be concerned about or take ownership of in terms of like, you know, log falls from within that area across the road, right?
Well, it's a public road now, so the town owns it, yeah.
If there becomes any drainage issues, that, you know, pooling of water on, you know, that part of the land that's part of the right-of-way...
Right.
That spill into the roadway.
I kind of see your point, but I would think that the town having control of it, of that area, if it is right-of-way, they have more control over that, in case there is those issues. We could, you know, give a 40-foot right-of-way for Jamsa, or 50-foot right-of-way for Jamsa Trail, and then that would create a couple of small parcels that could be included in the open space. I think that would be more confusing than just giving the right-of-way to the town. But it's not going to adversely impact the project either way. It's kind of more of a, what would the board like to see? And my thought on that as well was giving the town additional, well, the right-of-way to the property line, because the other road, which I can't think off the top of my head the name of it, Saks, thank you, because that is basically right on the property line, if there was ever a realignment or something that wanted to happen with those two roads, then they would have the right-of-way already to do that, at least on our side.
So that'll be, will that be like a separate component of language, separate from the open space? Because part of the open space subdivision is that town council has to review the language. I think I brought this up in the previous conversation, and I think you addressed it, but, you know, I hadn't really thought about that piece. Is that gonna be, is that something that'll be captured in the same document, or it'll be a separate document?
It would be when the deed for the right-of-way was granted to the town, it's just like any other right-of-way. And typically, we don't even grant deeds now, it's just shown on the subdivision plans. Okay. So it would just be shown as a right-of-way on the subdivision plans, and then, well, the road's already accepted, so... This is kind, this is a really unique situation.
Yeah.
Where we have a public road without a right-of-way. I've never run into it before in 25-plus years. So we are granting the right-of-way to the town that should have been granted before the road was accepted. So we kind of jumped steps. Now we're stepping back and saying, because we have the ability, per the subdivision, to do that, now we're just granting the actual right-of-way.
Okay. So I have a question about the, I didn't see what you mentioned about the road agent and sending you something. Do you have that here?
Do I have the letter? I actually do. Honestly, I don't know if I printed that one out. I printed the fire chief's out, I believe. Oh, no, I didn't print that one out. No. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Well, anyway, you mentioned drainage, et cetera, and so I think there might be some valid points for what the road agent's bringing up there, but, yeah, we don't have that letter, or know what that information really is.
The, Kevin, do you have the... Yeah, you did. So his comment, and I'll paraphrase, was that there's 11 new houses and 11 new driveways, so that he thinks it would be appropriate for drainage to be reviewed and the culvert sizes to be evaluated. Like I said, we typically don't do that for a single-family residential house without a road, because we're not creating any new roads. We are putting on new houses, new driveways, but, so, but that's at the purview of the board to request it.
And that's, my feeling is that there's gonna be, especially knowing the history of that road particularly, there's gonna be effect on that road, and without looking at that, so...
Sure.
That's why I'm, it's kind of emphasized for me.
And if we require and have it, it kind of creates a baseline for existing, and, you know, in case there are adverse effects, you know, down the road after development, you know, goes in, like you said, the applicant's not gonna be the one building, you know, it's, even though it's not a new road, it's just increase in impervious surface, and depending on what happens with the driveways and all the other areas there, I could see why there might be a benefit to have it looked at at least and addressed at a time.
Can you see that, Gary? Do you want me to read it? I'm sorry. I'm just gonna read it. Does that work?
That's good.
Oh, look at you. Probably right.
There you go.
I'm still gonna read it at this. All right. So this is Sean, road agent. My first plans to plan and thoughts would be the 11 roofs being added, impossible paved driveways, and the added watershed that this would create to the wetlands. I think a hydraulic system, I'm sorry, study, that should be done. If it already hasn't been, and upgrades to existing culverts, or adding more culvert should be looked at. I think road improvements will need to be made to handle that traffic. Current road conditions are fine for current conditions, but anything more than that would have road upgrades as well. Or, I should have road upgrades.
Thank you.
So for the second part, you mentioned we can definitely seek further feedback from the road agent on that, about, you know, what kind of improvements and which areas are being addressed to help guide both us and you on that. And then the hydrologic study, I don't know if they mean that necessarily, or it sounds like they're talking more about an erosion, an erosion plan for that.
I have a couple items of interest. As a conservation commission person, I think that the commission would be interested in an alternative driveway rather than having them asphalted, but having gravel driveways would allow for permeability of wire to go into the soil before it reaches the road. of water to go into the soil before it reaches the road. My second comment is that I, looking at moving that lot that was on Moore's over to Jamsa really was good, a good neighborly thing to do. So we didn't have a third house over there looming over the existing neighborhood. And how big are these lots acre-wise? There's no indication.
I think, look at C2, it may be hard to read, but they're all, well, they're mostly around forty to forty-five thousand square feet.
Okay.
There are a few that are bigger.
Bigger, yeah.
Eight and nine are bigger just to get the proper areas for construction. Seven's a little bit larger because we do have the wetland finger in the front of the property, and we have to get to the accessible area in the back of the property. We did try to reduce the size of them to increase the size of the open space. I think we did a pretty good job of it, but hundred-foot frontage with twenty-five-foot setbacks create, you know, and the houses these days are at least fifty-foot typically in, in width, and so that limits you. You have to have, you know, front to back and, you know, expand it back, so. I think we've tried to limit the size as much as possible while still giving the homeowner opportunity to site their house.
Very good, thank you.
And with the lot sizing, we'd have to go back and look and see if we have, if we can, if our conditional use permit is allowed for lot sizing or if going above the max requires, would require variance, I'd have to read back in the zoning ordinance to see.
I think, I think the, the town was very far sighted with your open space.
Yeah.
And my reading of it is basically says you can change any of these requirements, but via conditional use permit, and, which I think is a great idea, especially it gives a lot of flexibility to the developer and to the builder as to what they can do and, and allows the, the board to really protect the sensitive areas that you do want to protect.
Make sure we reread that and check it to make sure, because I don't want to guide you one way and then find out, oops, should have done it the other way, or, because they both have, you know, different, different levels of obviously cost and time for, for you and for everybody else. So, is there any other discussion? I mean, again, I think overall, this is an improvement, it keeps more of the open space contiguous. I think it'd be great if it was reduced one lot, like eight and nine somehow, so that you got away from the wetlands over there and stayed away from being behind another house, you know, that'd be probably more ideal, but is this within our regs most likely, so?
I don't know if it's been mentioned before or not, but on number fourteen, it does say the status of Jompa Hill Trail in Raymond is still unknown. Is that a section of the road, trail slash trail itself?
So my surveyors have gone and, and tried to find as much information as they can on all these roads. Obviously, Moore's Road and Raymond they found to be a public road. Jamsa, they weren't able to find any information on. So we're not certain, and it's only a small section that actually crosses the property line or the, the town line before you hit Mountain Road. We're not certain, and maybe Raymond is more certain, the town of who owns that section. And maybe nobody cared because it's so close to Mountain Road, but...
So that's gonna be something that has to come up through Raymond, so that section is in Raymond with the applicants before that board for access. That's gonna be one of the pieces that will have to be discussed on their part. But it is a valid, valid thought.
Because whoever's plowing it or maintaining it has to go through the Mountain Road anyway, there's no way, there's no way to stop. Which is going back to it's such a short distance that it... And the plow truck doesn't lift up his plow and go turn around on Mountain Road and come back, it just doesn't do that. Could, I suppose, if it doesn't.
So would Raymond be responsible for plowing half of it and we plow the other half?
Raymond doesn't do nothing.
But it was just mentioned they might be.
Well, we're just talking about that little section that's in Raymond, and I'm just saying that if the Nottingham is plowing Jamsa Trail, I can't see that they wouldn't just obviously be going through to Mountain Road and...
What might be happening in practice doesn't change the fact that that part of the road is still in Raymond. They, their board has purview over that piece, so that would be part of the, again, based on state RSAs, anytime access to an area is from a town that is only access from another, another town, it has to go to that town's planning board for, for comment.
So I would be interested to, to find out how tomorrow night's meeting goes in reference to that.
You're on there, Agent, tomorrow?
Not, not tomorrow, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're submitting tomorrow.
I missed, obviously.
And if there's no further question on the board for, for now, I'll open the public hearing just to see if there's any new comment. I know these plans are kind of fresh, obviously, we're seeing them tonight, but I just request that if you're speaking in favor of the application, come up first, against, or just with questions, come up after, just identify yourself, please, and direct all your questions, comments to the board, please.
You want to take one favor of the law first? Waiting for all the answers.
We'll just open it up, yeah, we'll open it up.
Good evening, I'm David Finn, I own thirty-six Moore's Road, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak. Spoken with a, a number of people. Unfortunately, Mr. Hire was unable to be here tonight, he's gathered a lot of information, and we've chatted a few times, but... Someone that our group has consulted with suggests that we ask the board, with all due respect, whether or not the gentleman representing the petitioner is properly licensed and properly credentialed to be here making these assertions and conducting these analyses and presenting to this board.
Okay, now, if there's anything more to that, but I can, when the applicant comes back up, I can just let them respond to that.
Okay, very good, thank you. I do have some comments that I'll be able to keep very brief because I think they're made moot by the changes I saw here, but the, but I can only work with what I saw on the public record, which, which was out there today, so. The, that corner lot, as, as I know, everybody knows, Nottingham zoning ordinance, Article II, Section C, subsection two, paragraph B, requires a two-hundred-foot right of way with certain exceptions. The maps that have been provided, including the yield plan and the, and the subdivision map, show at most ninety-nine point five feet of frontage for that, for that particular lot. On the yield plan, it had over four-hundred feet because it was basically horseshoe-shaped and connecting to Moore's Road in two different places, but in no place does it say what the individual sections were on the yield plan. As I said, this is likely moot now with the changes that are, that are being filed. There is, someone might say that there is an exception in accordance with Article Four, Section T, but it fails that exception, I believe, through the zoning ordinance, Article Four, Section T, subsection two, paragraph B, which basically says the, not basically, it says the frontage of the lot to be subdivided must be less than four-hundred feet on a street complying with NHRSAs and so on. If greater than four-hundred feet, the lot does not qualify for backlot subdivision. And that lot currently, Lot thirteen-one on tax map seventy-two has greater than four-hundred feet of frontage. So, as I said, this may be moot now, but if that lot does come back into play with the original design, you'll see me back here. I, I just wondered as well about the gifting of the, the land. Gifts make me a little bit nervous sometimes, and I'm wondering if there's any consideration about having it taken out of the tax base. I know that the two roads run very closely together, I've been in that neighborhood for well over thirty years, and actually, the property line goes up and touches the apparent right of way of Saks Road right now, so... That was just one concern that I had, and as far as any section of Jamsa or Mo's, Moore's, going through Raymond, it is in fact the only way to get into those houses, and it is in fact through Raymond, whether or not, with all due respect, whether or not a plow is lifted or not, I know that the same thing happens, there's like a mutual arrangement that goes on because the same thing happens with other roads in other towns in our direction, so... Also, just a couple of quick points. There is concern of the potential impact on road use, that's been brought up before. Adding ten homes, adding eleven homes means twenty-plus vehicles, Nottingham portion of the road is a dirt road, which will require more maintenance to the increase. And when that road was, was made a town road, I remember very specifically hearing someone on the board make reference to, at its current, that it's acceptable at its current use, and this, this will be double its current use. There is concern on potential impact on existing wells, aquifers, leach fields, very happy to see the conservation commission involved and, and other people. I was, I was an officer of the Lake Improvement Association for many years, so, and, and very interested in the ecology of the area. I was also chairman of the Economic Development Committee in Nottingham for a number of years, so I understand there needs to be a balance between development and, and ecology. There will be loss of habitat, there has been recent loss of habitat on Saks Road with, in a completely separate project, but there is more and more pressure on, on the wildlife in the area. New construction would entail removal of trees and other vegetation, those of us who live downhill from those sites have concerns over new runoff patterns, and I hear that that's being considered as well, and I appreciate that. There is also concern by current residents regarding lake access for new homeowners. There's a boat ramp at the far, it's not a boat ramp, the far end of Moore Road, Moore's Road, dead ends at the water. That section of the road was not part of what the town agreed to take, but there, so there, there is concern over where the access will be. As a past officer of the Rockledge Park Beaches Association, I know that there are a couple of strips of land where people in a certain collection of deeded areas have right to pass down to the water, and some of these are hardly bigger than a footpath. We're very concerned about whether or not there are any plans for that. I know that's not something that will come up in a planning board meeting, but just please know that the residents have a lot more of, more to be concerned about, a lot more on their plate than what is obvious right here. So that's probably why you're seeing some emotions running a little high sometimes and more, and a fair amount of passion. Again, I appreciate the opportunity, oh, when, when can we expect to see those drawings available in the public record, the new drawings?
These usually come up? So what, we would ask the applicant to submit these electronically so that we could get them to the land use clerk, and then we'll post them online, that usually takes...
I just downloaded it, so I'll, I'll be in, so I'll get them up on the next day. Ah, that's the note.
Okay. And the sidewalk notes that you had put up, are those gonna be part of the public record or are those personal working papers?
No, they will be, if they're sidewalk notes, that, we have draft minutes of the sidewalk. We have a few sets of minutes that we are currently just draft for, but that will be, those will be posted once they're approved. Right now, they're available as draft, but they're not online because they're a draft, we usually...
Okay, I went through the site this afternoon, I didn't...
There, yeah, they were, based on the case, we're a little bit behind on our minutes, but you can email the land use clerk, and he can at least get you the draft version of it.
Okay, very good, and I do appreciate all the volunteer work that goes into running this, so, thank you.
I have a notebook, so...
Just identify yourself first.
I'm not playing games, I'm taking notes on my phone. I'm Heather Iwarski, I live at one oh-four Mountain Road in Nottingham, so, right there where that plow truck turns around and doesn't get my driveway. All right, I have looked at all of the documents saved online. The new documents were not posted, and I feel like legally they should have been before we had this public meeting, so there's definitely time to review, so I can foresee a continuance in the future. One of the documents that wasn't addressed was the Strafford Planning Commission, they did do a review. They did recommend that the Lamprey River, I don't have it in front of me, but it's the Lamprey River Association or the...
Advisory Committee.
Yes, that they were supposed to follow up on this, and I'm not sure if that has happened, if it's on the schedule, what the timeline is on that.
I believe we sent the request to them.
Okay.
We haven't heard anything apparently from them, but we did send notification to them about it.
Okay, so the wetland study, I haven't seen a formal wetland study, I work with low-wetland scientists probably almost every day. There's always a study, there's always a report, there's always a map, I would really like to see a copy of that. I don't know if it was just that corner that your wetland scientists looked at, but ideally, they look at that entire property. Because I walk down it almost every day, and there's, it's all wetlands, I don't know what else to tell you. It's, it's also dry right now, as Ms. Mooney pointed out, has rained a few times, but, I, I mean, it's, it's easy to tell just with the vegetation and where the water runoff would be, whether it's dry or wet, it's, anyone could tell. Wildlife study, I haven't heard anything about that, that kind of relates to wetlands, but more of a wildlife study of, when you take down all of those trees, we don't have an excavation plan because they're only selling the lots to somebody else, so there's even a bigger hurdle after this is potentially approved. The big hurdle is who's gonna buy this, who's gonna build it, what are these houses gonna look like, are they gonna be sustainable? Are they gonna have to meet certain codes, are they gonna have to keep a certain amount of trees? I'm really worried about that and wildlife, and of course, that ties into erosion, well water. The hydrogeological study wasn't done, that was recommended, so I'm still waiting for that. The Rockingham Planning Commission didn't provide their input. I think it's weird that Nottingham is the Strafford Planning Commission, but I'm just curious. Raymond is the Rockingham Planning Commission, we're talking about Raymond and Nottingham, I would like their input. Let's see, even, there was, there was talk about the small wetland, having, you know, eleven lots and a small wetland impact. A small wetland, a small impact, it, it goes wide. I mean, if you're, if you're affecting a small area, those animals or those microorganisms, anything living there, I mean, they just don't live in that little spot. Things rely on all of these square foot and these acres of wildlife that we actually have left in the world. So I would, I just don't understand how it's not a big deal, because it is. The underground utilities, I think what I saw was underground utilities are required, so that's more excavation. These are hydroic soils, I know that there were soil pits, test pits, but I didn't see a soil survey. I looked on the web soil survey results, that's not always accurate online, I'd really like to see a soil scientist out there as well. Because that's just, I mean, you're digging how deep and disturbing it even more. I'm also concerned about, why are we moving lots and playing jigsaw? Why aren't we eliminating lots to make this a more sustainable and harmony kind of development? Yes, this gentleman owes this land, it's his land, I believe they have a right to do, you know, it's your land, but you have a land that is majority, it's a wetland, say, like, embrace that. This property wasn't meant to be developed, and if it is gonna be developed, you're... And if it is going to be developed, you're lucky to get two lots out of it. I don't know how we're getting eleven lots out of it. If this is approved, I would be very disappointed in everyone in this town. It's ridiculous. And the gentleman who owns the land, I don't know, he's not here, so he's hiding. What else? What do I have? Sprinkler systems. So, we have a cistern or sprinkler systems. We still didn't do that hydrogeological study. We know we're in a drought. We know well water levels are really low. That's obviously going to make an input, impact, especially for either of those. Flood plane study. So, there was talk about the flooding, and we don't have that info. And I'm not talking about like the hundred-year kind of flood plane, or I'm talking about just those houses, those people who are going to invest in these properties. That is not fair for anyone to come in here and then realize that they can barely do what their dream home that they imagined. And yeah, so, just closing, I think we should think about more sustainable goals for how we develop and construct. And I just don't foresee this being feasible for this town. I did not move into that property across the street because it was Manchester. I moved into it because of the wildlife, because it was walking distance to the lake, because it was peaceful. You know, there wasn't a lot of light pollution. I can only imagine the amount of light pollution we're going to get in our house when more traffic comes up Jamsa. I, I mean, two new drivers, I can't, I'm totally against this. That's all I have to say.
You're the second person that's mentioned flooding. Is there anywhere in particular on the plans that you've, that this is like being addressed towards? That's, obviously, we have the, if we have a hundred-year flood zone, we don't know where that line is. Is there any specific area on here that you're, like, with that conflict's coming up?
When I walk down Jamsa, I'm not too familiar with Moore's, so I can't speak to that side. But when I walk down Jamsa, everywhere, Jamsa Road erodes. It just erodes every year. The, I mean, you can talk to the road agent or whoever's responsible for redoing that, but every year, that road is redone, and every year, that road degrades. And the water runs on each side of the road. I know, because my dogs like to drink that disgusting water that runs there. And it pools up on the sides. So, there is flooding off of the road and the sides. I don't know exactly in these two properties without like a Google satellite image or knowing or doing a site walk, but there's, it definitely pools up.
There are times when Jamsa Trail is sections of it are partly submerged.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. That'd be, so that would go back to the road agent for it. Thank you for that. What does that have to come up before you...
The flooding part. On Moore's Road, where the stream goes under the road, it has overflowed and flooded that part of the road.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And then, I guess, just one more thing. These two roads are essentially dead ends. So, people are going to have to turn around. Delivery drivers are going to have to turn around. Mail's going to have to turn around. You can't get through Jamsa legally and go to Sacks. It's private property around that bend. So, I can only imagine the people at the end of Jamsa Road are not going to be happy with everyone turning around in their driveway. But that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other, just come on up to the table, please.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you before with the flooding. Diane Lapate, I live at 34 Moore's Road. Just a small question. If there is somebody on this board that is good friends with the landowner, should he or she be excused from any decisions made?
Okay. So, I think the question is excused, or what we would call recusal. So, there's specific, we have our own bylaws and rules of procedure regarding recusal. And then, I believe there's state laws about it, too. So, in general, it's almost always up to every individual on the board, whether or not they choose to recuse for a case or not. The times where it is generally really mandated is if they have a financial interest in something or a personal, direct personal interest, meaning, you know, it's their land, things like that, we should recuse. Other than that, it's up to every, every individual to make that personal choice. Sometimes if someone has a specific item that could be considered or might be construed as a conflict of interest, they can voice it and still stay on to address it. Or, but there is really nothing there beyond those pieces there that we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Craig Porter. I live at 18 Moore's Road. Probably the guy that's going to get hit the most. On this lot, I'm going to have the house behind me. Changed things, so I have to change what I'm going to say a little bit. But I still do have a, first of all, I'm not going to talk about the conservation aspect, but I'd just ask you to pass over there, keep you an idea of what's on the property and what's out there. It's just one page for a person. First, I want to say thank you. I can't express how much I really appreciate the time and effort you're putting into this. I'm not going to talk about the conservation aspect or why I live in Nottingham. I feel you all, I feel you already know why we all chose to live twenty miles from the nearest city in a town with limited or no takeout. I would like to say that I landscape my yard to invite nature in. So, I have three bird feeders, three bird faths, a large garden, and an area of my yard I don't mow until August because turtles come up every year and lay their eggs in May and June. Moving on to the other thing, I am a certified real estate appraiser, and I'd like to comment on my opinion of what's going to happen to the value of the, well, now that you get rid of that lot, I'll say four homes. Numbers eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-four possibly are all going to be affected. I believe if we see any part of the home except their driveways, even if we see just the driveways, we're going to take a three to five percent hit financially. That's ten to twenty thousand dollars. If we see the roof of the home in the rear, a five to seven hit, which could be twenty to thirty thousand. If we see windows of the home or any part of the first floor, that could be a fifteen to twenty percent hit in value. That's forty to sixty thousand dollars for three to four of us. Now, even if you don't believe my numbers, I don't think anyone sitting here is going to argue with me that we are going to take some sort of little financial hit on this. I'm sorry, I have to edit it because you changed things. Basically, that's it. I do have a real concern. I realize they moved the house from the septic on Lot Nine behind me. But I will say, I'd like to just say what I was going to say, and that is it appears too close. It is going to sit higher than my well and my neighbor's well, especially considering that there is already a seasonal underground stream that comes down through the property and possibly will go through their septic and into our wells. Now, we're all talking about this wetlands area right behind my house. I have a stream. I dug a hole trying to make a little pond just to stop it from coming into my backyard, which then went into my basement. I ended up, I couldn't stop it because the stream comes out under a rock. That's where it comes out, under a big, huge rock. I can't stop it, so I had to divert it. And now, every time, it rains. Not just a little rain. That's all it takes. It just takes, doesn't have to be a big flooding rain. You'll get a stream down my driveway and across the road. And I think when you guys did the walkthrough, you saw the little, kind of a speed bump now in front of my house for everybody to slow down. And it's because there is water going through there. Now, whether it's wetlands or just a stream, it's still water going through there. Anyway, I would just ask that you take another look at that before you approve that lot, because I think that is a real problem.
Sure. So, you're talking about proposal lot, this revised plan, proposal Lot Nine is by map seventy-two, Lot Five?
Uh, is that? Can't see the numbers. I'm sorry, this lot here.
Yeah.
Lot Nine?
Where is it that you said you witnessed the, like, that stream or that water flow going from, in regards to your lot? Is it to the, to the southern side of it or the north?
Of my lot? It comes in from the north, from the back of the house. And then, it comes down the, on the right side, so the east side of the house. It comes right down my driveway. There's a...
Okay. So, between you and Lot, and that next lot over?
Yes. Yeah, and the next house. Yeah. Yeah, between eighteen and twenty. I'm pretty much done, but in closing, just like I say, I'm not trying to stop the eleven lots, but do believe that there are other site options to get all eleven lots without drastically affecting the value of anyone's home. Now, this is going to affect the value of at least the four of us right here. And what I would ask is, why can't both lots be moved over to Jamsa? So, it affects nobody. Yeah, because on Jamsa Trail, there's no houses over there. I mean, it does affect the people at the end, the traffic at the beginning of their road, but it doesn't affect, no one's going to take a big hit like these four homes are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And again, I really appreciate all the time you guys put in.
Any other public comment? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Guy, if you would, my, come back to the table. I'll let you, if you'd like to respond, you do that. Feel free.
So, first of all, I will say that I've been doing this about twenty-five years, and I have never had my credentials questioned. But I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Hampshire and Maine. I have been doing it for a long time, and I do have the authorization of the applicant to do it. So, other than that, that's just a funny one for me. We have talked about the road use and improvements. We're going to get input hopefully from the road agent. I have not had any input from Stratford County or the regional. If you guys, if the town has received it, can I please be forwarded? Because we haven't received any input. Other than that, we meet the town's requirements. We believe we meet the town's requirements for these lots, just like anybody else that wants to develop their lot in town. We appreciate the input from the Butters, but at the end of the day, if we meet the requirements in the town zoning, the lot gets approved. And that's just not our lot. That's anybody else's lot in town. If the public wants to change the zoning, they're more than happy to do that.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further comment for the board?
Can I just, I want to speak to the other regional planning commission as a representative of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. Barry pointed out, the, his application is not properly before their board yet, so there hasn't been anything for them to comment on, other than the fact that they're aware of it. I have been in contact with my counterpart. So, when it's before their board, at that time, I presume that that person will give the same, similar technical analysis that I'm required to do for when things are before your board. So, there isn't anything that's been missed yet. It's just that it's not before the board. So, as he said, it'll be before them, or it'll be submitted shortly. It'll be on their agenda soon enough. And at that time, I imagine they'll comment. I mean, I'm speculating, but I presume that they will do something similar to what I did here. It'll be different, but it'll be something.
So, just to clarify, Nottingham's planning board has recommended to the regional plant, the regional board that they look into this, and that's like the steps. We don't typically, unless we have the input from the town, to go to the regional board and then input from the regional board to come and talk to them. So...
Right. So, all right. I should clarify. There are such a two points of where they could comment. The regional planning commission, as an entity, now has standing in the same way a Butter has standing. And they could comment from that perspective. I have not heard anything from that. I don't know that they're planning to do that. However, they're also circuit rider, a staff member is a circuit rider, in the same way I was a circuit rider here, for the town of Raymond. So, the town of Raymond, well, not only had standing, but now also has an application before them to review.
Correct.
Not for the full breadth of an application the way we do. Theirs is only for access. But it is, it is a clear point of, you know, I don't want to say contention, but a point of discussion, we'll say. And I imagine that their staff planner for Raymond...
Who is Rockingham Regional Planning Commission?
Precisely, yes. Yeah. Would make comments for their local application, not the DRI that was submitted to them. So, yeah, okay, I guess there was a nuance there, but yes, you're right. I would expect it more from the Raymond Planning Board's perspective.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah. To the questions, there was a question about, yes, we're in Rockham County. It was, the town long ago left the Rockham Planning Commission as our planning commission and utilized Stratford Regional. I believe most of the input was that most of the items that impact our town are more in line with the Stratford County region, given that we have Barrington, Lee, Northwood, all Stratford County. This is what happens to me against Raymond, which is Rockham County. So, that was a determination that was made quite a while ago to utilize the services of Stratford Regional Planning Commission versus Rockham Regional Planning Commission for our local, our local items. So, I know there was a couple of questions. So, erosion setup and control plan. I could ask the, I will ask the road agent for some clarification as to what improvements they're looking for and how that erosion plan would assist. I think given the potential layout of the homes and the proximity of the, of the impervious services or potential impervious services of driveways and building envelopes, you know, an erosion plan could be helpful to that. Again, generally, when driveways are installed, they have to be a negative grade from the road so that, you know, water isn't shedding down and going into the, spilling into the roadway. Hydrogeologic study, the board could request that. I would put it up to the board to make a call on that, if we're going to require it or not.
Just to that point, to what end would, I'm putting it out there, to what end would a hydrogeological study? What question are you asking the answer to before you determine if you want it or not? The state will review the septic systems as well as the state subdivision, which includes the well locations. So, if we meet the requirements of the state subdivision for eleven lots, which on forty-eight acres, I can guarantee you that we will meet that requirement. So, it's just a matter of what's the question that the board would have the hydrogeological study answer? If the board decided to move that way?
Any other points? Do you remember any more, Blair, that I missed?
No, I don't have anything specific. I mean, it's...
What about the flooding into the, between nineteen and twenty going down that way? It's got a constant flooding that moves between there.
Is there a runoff in hydrologic studies or...
Maybe there's something that can be done to prevent that from happening.
Oh, so nineteen to twenty way over here to the, from where this proposed development is, I don't see that there's anything we could require, because all of it's far away from, if you're looking at map seventy-two, Lot Nineteen to Lot Twenty. I mean, you can see that there's wetlands flagged there now. So, that seems to be...
So, we're talking access from Lot Two. So, any runoff that they have from their septic is going to go into the water system, into the surface water in the middle of the... Into the surface water in the middle of the map there, right down into between nineteen and twenty? Along with the water that's already going there? So, they've, they've got a leach field there, and that's all leached down that way?
I think the, uh, I think the, the flow of this watershed area is from the west to the east, being Jampa Trail through the Beaver Pond to the intermittent stream, and then across, I would believe, uh... Could it, could, could there be groundwaterology or something else involved that would bring something to the north? That's, I can't speak towards that, but... But, yeah, the way I look at it, is, all the, all the development is clustered towards the southern side of the property. What's... I don't know that there'd be...
So, the hydro...
Get it back to lot nineteen to twenty?
The hydro soil that they're gonna be doing on, that they're gonna be testing on, will be which part of the land?
It would usually be, uh, I mean, the, the parcel as a whole, that should, to talk, discuss that, yeah.
So, that should be part of the parcels? The hydro inquiry? The seable line goes right around ten and eleven?
Right, the yellow is the, uh, the wetland setback.
Right. So, if we're talking about a hydro test, then that would have a lot to do with it, in my opinion. So, if they're going to be out there testing, that's a whole, we're gonna be...
Yeah, could be, yeah. Uh, then obviously, you'd wanna, Mr. Guyer, propose a lot of love, if you wanna shift that four K area out of the, uh, out of that wetland setback. All the others look like they're outside of it, that one just got squished into it, part of it anyway.
Yeah, I'll, I'll clarify that, number eleven, oh, yeah, thank you.
I think it's also helpful, if, if they're known where they are, to show kinda where the existing wells are, are the, the other lots, uh, helps that they identify kinda where leach fields may go, and if there might be additional impact from, from those.
And I know the road, um, there's gonna be a road study? A road agent improvements? For Jampa Trail? 'Cause it's a dead end, so if fire trucks try to get down there, are they gonna... It's like there's no roundabout.
Yeah, it'd be something we get for, for the road agent, and then sometimes a fire chief, uh, on that, if they're looking for more improvement on that area. So, again, we'll seek, uh, the road agent's advice on those pieces. Discussion for the board?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest that the applicant also go, uh, and ask the Natural Heritage Bureau for a wildlife assessment of the area. Which is pretty standard for something the size and proximity to the lake. I also, just thinking off the top of my head, listening to that, the last, um, Butter, that it might be possible to move lot nine over to Jampa Trail, between the two wetlands, further down from ten and eleven, and that would ease up that area as well, as far as encroachment on the existing neighborhood. Lot nine, the Moores, over to Jampa. More to the north of the other two.
Yep, I know what you're talking about.
This is a thought.
Yep, we'll, we'll evaluate it, um...
So, what they might do with that, you'd, what negative of it is, uh, you potentially be breaking up the, that contiguous area, the open spacer, segmenting that block a little bit more. Uh, that Jampa Trail is obviously the, the lesser improved of the two roads by far. It's a much narrower road, uh, than Moores Road is.
That was, that was our intent, is to try to keep as much traffic off of Jampa as possible, just because Moores Road is in better shape and has been somewhat improved recently.
Yeah, again, I think this is a much improved plan. Again, I think if, if you were, if one lot worth were going away, it'd be, you know, that lot eight and nine somehow, you know, the buildable area kinda stayed away from the current lot, I think that would give you a little more setback away from the, the wetlands and the, the existing houses, I think it'd be a little bit more, uh, amenable to everybody. But like you said, if, you know, we have to look at the yield, and consider that as well, which we have to go back through and take a look at the, the revised yield plan. It does make sure everything matches up there. Have you approached anybody about who's gonna, uh, who's gonna hold the easement for the open space?
Uh, we, our intent is for the homeowners association to hold the easement for the open space.
Okay. Is that doable? I'm not as familiar, I always thought it had to be a third party?
That's one of the options in, uh, open space.
That would be fine, yeah.
Okay.
So, the Conservation, um, Commission's next meeting, because of Columbus Day balling, balling on the second Tuesday of October, is now scheduled for the seventeenth of October. And you would contact Mr. Sam Demerit, who's in the room tonight.
We will do that, I'm sure his information's on the website.
Yes, contact him, yeah.
Kevin could help.
Yeah. The page.
Thank you.
All right, so we have, uh...
Let's circle back to something real quick. Are, are we anticipating, uh, impact to the wetland for the shared drive, shared access point with six and seven, lots six and seven?
It's wetland buffer impact, not wetland impact.
Okay. So, a conditional use permit is not...
No, I believe a conditional use permit is required for buffer impacts.
Okay.
I haven't filed it yet, I actually have it filled out, and just haven't submitted it yet. So, I have three conditional use permits we will be submitting, that's one of them. The, um, we talked about it on the first meeting, the removal of the hundred-foot vegetative buffer for the exterior of the project, and then the lot sizes.
I would just emphasize again, that, that drainage analysis, no matter what happens with lot nine, if it gets moved or not, I think that's definitely, uh...
And it's, it's at the purview of the board, so if the majority of the board agrees that we need to do a drainage analysis, then that's what we'll do.
So, yeah, I guess, Mr. Anderson, if that's something, yeah, if you would like to make a motion towards something like that, we could, uh, put it to a vote?
So, I would, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll see if I get to the right pages. Uh, so, we, uh, require of the applicant to do drainage analysis for, uh, application twenty-two dash zero one one dash S U B.
By second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Anderson, uh, second by Ms. Sandler, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, uh, motion carries seven zero. All right, so, obviously, there's a, you wanna get before the Conservation Commission for their input, uh, and then it'll be back before us again. So, we'd be looking at the, uh, twenty-sixth of December, uh, October?
Sorry, what day was that?
October twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Would be the next one, after the ConCon. That also allows, uh, yeah, comment to come in to us from them.
Yeah, and if any input we can get from the, um, the road agent as to, I know we still have to discuss with the board, but getting his input is, is critical.
Yep.
I mean, it could go from a highway to change something here and there.
Sure.
So, that's a big difference.
Yeah, we'll reach out, uh, and request if you could clarify the comments, uh, for that. And we can reach back out to Land River Advisory Committee to see if they do have any comments, and just, you know, put a deadline on it, so that we're not just, uh, sitting there waiting for that too. And obviously, any discussion that, uh, or decisions that are made by Raymond, I'm sure they'll forward to us if, we just wanna make sure we get that, hopefully timely as well, so we can review everything, and, uh, the potential language for the easement, the conservation easement part of it?
Yeah, yeah, we need, I need to get you the homeowners association and the, yes.
We have to get that to the, uh, to legal for...
Yep.
For review. You know, get into budget season, I'm sure their, their time gets, gets, uh, taken up.
And I, I know you had stated that, you know, the language with regards to the right-of-way is gonna be just on the plans, it won't actually appear as its own deed, or is, that doesn't really get done?
Typically, it can, I mean, we can write a deed for it.
I don't, no, I don't wanna speak for, you know, town council, I, I don't know how Nottingham does things, I actually don't even know it well enough to even speculate.
We could reach out to the select board on that, to see if they prefer season, because usually if it was an easement, like a deed to easement or something to the town, the select board has to accept it, we can't accept landage or anything like that, a baffled out. Where it's a right-of-way, it's a different, different scenario, we could still reach out and say, this, this has been proposed, please provide comment if you have any.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating they, we prefer that we give them a right-of-way, it's just a matter of how much, I guess.
Yeah. Well, just, yeah, okay. I guess you'll have to react after we find out what that answer is. Wanna see, I want someone to see that language, whether it's on the plan, or whether it's in a separate document.
Sure.
So, I guess you can't provide us anything until, like, final, you know what to pry, so, I guess it's kind of a moot point at this juncture.
We could follow up on that part. Okay?
Excuse me, could I ask a question?
I'll allow one more question, sure.
I, I just wanna know why there will be a homeowners association?
It's required for, uh, open space subdivisions, because of the fact that the common land, the open space, is, uh, is owed still by the, what would be potentially now eleven homeowners. It'd be deed restricted, restricted for development and things like that. But the, the, there, there comes cost with, with that as well, for maintenance and review, uh, like, all, some of the other parcels of the town, it's some, our Conservation Commission monitors, others, it's Bear Paw, Regional Greenways, or Southeast Land Trust that, uh, monitors to make sure that they're still within compliance of, of the, uh, open space rules. If I spoke wrong, someone correct me, please, but you're welcome. All right, so a motion to continue to October twenty-sixth at seven P M would be, uh, in order.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue case number twenty-two dash zero one one dash S U B till October twenty-sixth at seven P M.
By second.
It's a motion by Ms. Moody, and it's second by Ms. Sandler, is there any further discussion? Uh, the only discussion maybe is, obviously, any new deliverables, uh, please have to us, uh, at least a week ahead of time, uh, to the ladies clerk. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, uh, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Guyer, thank you, everybody that was here tonight for this.
Thank you all very much.
Give everybody a break, take a step out, and I'm just gonna go to the...
I already done. And you gotta stand up to the left, so if you go down there, if you lose it, okay, no. You know, when this guy in Sax's Road cleared out these, he went and clear-cut every single tree off the free property. These people should be happy that this guy didn't go through it. He didn't cut everything. Was he gonna cut every tree down? Just on my lot, cut everything down? Changes. Perfectly legal. But it changes, changes a lot.
Uh, we'll jump back into the agenda. Kevin, uh, I'll make, did you get copies of both of these? Hand out some.
Copy files, who knows? Actually, I wrote them on my...
Uh, what, so, this is what that gentleman handed out.
Yeah, no, I forgot, I handed it...
I ha, I actually downloaded it from Sky, so I have it.
I didn't know if you needed it.
I don't have it, if you have a big, I'll take it.
I wrote it online, so, if someone had it, write on theirs.
Maybe I have one there.
Boy, hand that in. All right, next on the, uh, agenda is that, that's our public hearings. We had a site plan subdivision, application changes, uh, for review. Uh, Mr. Haney had taken quite a bit of time to update our, our applications as we requested, and sent those out prior to the last meeting. What we're trying to do is, obviously, right now, we kinda have, uh, we kinda use, it's like a hybrid, which isn't great, 'cause they're, they're different. So, we're just proposing to create new applications, so that we make it clear for applicants, as well as, uh, staff and the boards, uh, when we are reviewing these. So, Mr. Haney, anything you wanted to particularly mention about, about these? I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Uh, no, no problem at all, I think it was, I think it was a healthy thing to do. I think it's just gonna make things a little bit easier for everyone. In one second, installing here, so we can find... So, well, all right, so two of the things. One is, uh, we did talk about taking the fee schedule out, so that was his own separate document, uh, so that would be one of the changes. The other big change was adding, uh, just requesting some kind of narrative. Here we go, sorry. As you mentioned, the big thing is separating out site, site plan review, uh, from subdivision.
Yep.
And then adding, adding, or taking out the, the fee requirements, and then, uh, also, um, adding a narrative section. Beyond that, there was a lot of clarification stuff, uh, just gonna make it very clear, like, here are the documents that you need to submit, um, and saying, oh, we reduced the number of, of copies as well, and said that everyone does need to require, uh, everyone does need to provide, uh, a digital, uh, copy as well, for Kevin, uh, for our files, but then also circulation. I made the Butter list a little bit bigger, um, added more space for that. Another change was that, uh, oh, we made, you know, a little more space for requests for waivers, um, and then, uh, putting it on the other side as well. This is just a little bit more clear, 'cause it puts it as a table, um, so it's easy for us to find, we know what they're looking for, what the request is. The application checklist was cleaned up a little bit, um, there was some, because we had, again, two applications, and one, there was some, you know, it wasn't clear, like, if I even I was reading it, it just didn't look clear. So, that was, you know, a big change there, and I went through each individual, each one, and I just maybe made some wordsmithing edits to, again, make it clearer, make it read more intuitively for whoever it might be. to, again, make it clearer, make it read more intuitively for whoever might be going through it. So, those are, you know, that's all the changes basically. As I said, the major ones were really just separating them out, asking for the summary, pull the fee schedule out, and then, you know, making a lot of these formatting changes really. Just try to use consistent language between all of them, because like, we talked about an owner, an applicant, and then whoever is, you know, coming before us, like Barry, right, so who's going to be speaking? So who should I be communicating to, who should Kevin be communicating to? Those kinds of things. So that's, that's, that's the summary of it, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you saw something that jumped out at you, there's usually a reason for it, but.
No, I like the narrative, I like, that was one of the items we've talked about for a while. The only thing I was going to say, we could include a verbiage in there if we feel like we need it, is to, you know, if more space is needed, please attach a separate.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
On the butters list, instead of saying print three address labels, I'd say, instead of print, I'd say include, or must include three address labels, that they have to, that's upon the applicant to do that.
Print three labels?
It says print three labels right, three, again, that's super minor, but just up top.
I'm sorry, what does it say, and what do you want it to change?
At the very top, right there, see where it says print three address labels? I don't, I just want to make sure it's strongly worded that that's, maybe we don't run into a problem with it, but that's applicant's responsibility.
Okay, oh, applicant should print or?
You know, must include. Again, we don't want to make that too long, so that's all. But that, I think we, it cleans up what we asked for. We can always amend this, again, if, you know, this is a warrant article type of thing, so should we, in practice, find that it's, either of them are, you know, confusing or need tweaking, we could do that.
Yeah, so, because the changes to this involved the number of plans that they need to provide, so when we went, we reduced the number of large sets, like the big twenty-four by thirty-six, from six.
To six?
Right.
I said, I think you wrote two on here, I said two or three.
So we need to address the site plan subdivision regs to make those coincide.
Yes, or just pull them out altogether, and just, it's part of the applicant, application. Application language, unless you think of a reason to, you know, you want it to be in the regs themselves. So either it needs to be edited or removed.
Sure, okay.
And it's section seven point one, that's it, I've been looking through it. I really hope I didn't miss one, but it's application form seven point one, it says six sets full size, and then ten, eleven by seventeen. That's not changing, it's just the six sets.
Alright, so it's just these two, right, we did do?
Yes, for now, we got these two, I didn't want to get hung up with the other ones, I just, let's get this out the door.
Is there any?
Next two.
Okay, sorry, I need to catch up there. Is there any further discussion on these applications? If not, a motion to, to approve the new subdivision and site plan applications.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Are these fillable online, PDFs? That's the next.
Yeah, that is definitely the next.
Are you looking for a motion right now? I am. To, to, to approve the new subdivision and site plan applications?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the new site plan. And what was the other part?
Subdivision.
Subdivision regulations.
Applications.
Applications.
We have a motion from Mr. Moore to approve the new subdivision and site plan applications, and a second by Ms. Mooney, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries seven zero, thank you. Next on the agenda?
Do you want to make an edit to the seven point one, do you want to remove it, do you want to just change it?
Not tonight, I know we need to, but if we're actually updating subdivision regulations, I think we have to hold, we have to make sure we address it as a, as a specific item on our agenda.
Oh, really?
And what I'd like to do is, hopefully, in the next, soon, we will, we will have a meeting where we make a bunch, all the changes at once, so that, there was a few others that were flagged that we need to get through this year. So hopefully, coming up in October.
So approval of these applications, we're not, they're not going live yet until we make those changes?
No, I consider these live, we can always, in the subdivision or site plan regs, we can always just waive, waive that part if we have to.
Okay, I just don't know if you want to wait until it's all done, just do it at once, or, you know, you want me to get these, like, put them up online tomorrow?
I think it's fine to put them online, I don't think, again, it's nothing substantive other than the number of plant sets.
I mean, I've even been telling you, I knew it was coming down the line, so people always ask, how many big, you know, sets do you?
Yep, and if it's something specific, we can always request more, that's, that's on our review. No, we will, so what we did was we reduced, we used to require six, seven, ten of the large plants, but most people are working off the eleven by seventeens, so we're still requiring the eleven by seventeens, not requesting so many of the really big ones.
They're still there, if you want to see them, if you have to see them, because Kevin will keep one set for in the office.
Yeah.
Keep both, basically. And then the other piece is, you're also going to get them emailed, I mean, you've been getting them emailed.
Very rare that anyone goes through these regularly. Now and then Sean, maybe the chief, maybe five chief are going to take a look at them for you to tell, but it's not, it doesn't justify every time there's a change, another plant set going out, or a big one going out, you know, six of them, because of the costs associated to the applicant, plus it's used in the office.
Public comment, we always reserve a time of night for the individual public to come in and have conversations with us, as long as it's not case or application specific, there's nobody here tonight, so we'll move on from that. Approval minutes, I would request that we table, I had sent in some edits, I don't think we had a chance to get them into the drafts that were there. So I would recommend or remember that we table, table those for tonight. I'm open to discussion on it, but I think I had quite a bit of edits for the first two sets at least.
Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a question, the minutes for August tenth, do they also include the non-public closed-door minutes? For acceptance?
I think we?
I was not there at that meeting.
You already accepted those.
Yeah, we accepted. And we, we could definitely make sure that we have all our other things, but we did seal those minutes at the last meeting. I don't know if we ever technically approved the minutes, you're correct, we just have to look and see.
I'll go back and look and see if we approved them, I see, is that?
Okay.
Yeah, we concealed them.
Right, sealed them, yeah, yeah, alright, Select Board, Staff Board, member updates, we'll start with Ms. Jones and work our way around the table.
There, good.
What's up?
Just thought, I don't know if anyone else had seen Stafford Regional, it sent something about, had to do with hate crimes and the increase of that, and I don't know if that went out to other people or who got that. And I didn't actually bring a copy of it, but it's, I found it interesting, and I believe Stafford Regional has it, posted someplace, so, but it's just very interesting that the increase of that type of stuff really being looked at more and more, so.
And what communities could do with it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward it to.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you talking about in the area, in the area in general?
Pardon me?
In the area?
Yeah, it's about, yeah, New Hampshire generally. But I'll follow that, it says a lot, a lot.
I realize that too.
Sure, why not, right. Select Board, well, we have a couple projects going on, we are going to pave, and I know it's not good, but there's been a lot of issues with Marston's parking lot over there, and the fact that people can't park, parking on the roads and everything like this, so it was decided that it was the best, best to pave that area and line it to adequately get the maximum amount of cars on that property safely and securely. So I know it's not the best thing to get it paved, but it was a necessity that felt was necessary. We're replacing all the, in the town sand pit area, you want to call it, we're replacing all our covers, because they were going bad, they expired their life and it holes in them, so it's a project that'll be taken care of before the winter started. As we all know, that Chris Darnell is leaving, so we have finalized our final plan for getting his replacement. We hopefully will have that done by next week, so when we come to the next meeting, I'll be able to tell you. And one other side conversation, when the lady asked tonight, and this is to be open and honest with all you here, you know, when she was asking about recusing, I want you to know I do know Mr. Rossberger. I've only seen him once this summer, and that was at a twenty-fifth anniversary party, that was with mutual friends on the lake. I haven't stepped on his property besides the sidewalk in probably over six or seven years. But because of my location, being on the Lake Association, being active in the town, I do know a lot of people, so I believe that was actually referred to me, but I have no, we are not in any way, you know, have that type of relationship. So it's just sort of quince that we just know same people.
I think.
And so that's why I'm not going to recuse myself from this, if I felt like there was a need to, and I felt my relationship was closer and it would interfere with what I was doing here, with all my experience, I would actually, and I hope you guys would know that from my experience, that I would actually pull myself from this instead of making a decision that would be impartial.
And like I said, it's a personal call, we'll, if you're okay with it.
It's a weird question, no one usually comes up and asks a direct question like that, and there has to be a reason. And I'm looking around, I know where most of you all live, and like you said.
The same people wanted to know the credentials of the engineer too.
Well, let's, yeah.
But that's it, we're just going to interfere that, right, I just wanted to be clear.
If you're okay with it, I think, if you're here next meeting or if you're not, that, I'll just kind of repeat what was, what was said again, just to get it case specific and just.
No, no, it wasn't being case specific, I'm just.
But thank you for clarifying who she was talking about.
I, well, I just want you guys to know.
Again, we can only speculate, and again, it's small towns, and we tend to, people know a lot of people, and there can be perception that maybe not be, that's not correct or accurate.
Not know a lot of people.
So other than that, we have a board meeting tomorrow night to go over some things for the Select Board, so we're meeting quite often now.
Sleep in here tonight?
What?
Sleep in here tonight?
Well, I was here last night for the board sub meeting, but we didn't have a quorum. So that meeting stuff is being pushed off to this meeting, and our public hearings being pushed off to another date, so it's just, it's a lot more time and effort that's going involved right now, so.
Thank you very much, just a reminder, October fifth, which I think is next Wednesday at this point, October's right around the corner. We have that sidewalk on Stevens Hill Road, if you can't make it, please send myself and Kevin an email, just so we're aware, as we try to see if we're going to have a quorum or not. I think it was set for five o'clock?
Five.
Five, yeah, because it's getting dark. Wednesday, October fifth.
Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to keep things on Wednesdays, but we may, as we're getting into the dark season, we might have to start moving stuff to, you know, weekends or earlier, because this case may be, I do want to make sure we get, we keep an eye on the agendas and our time as we're getting to the end of the year, if we're going to start looking at zoning amendments for warrant articles, and also make sure we don't lose sight of any of the subdivision changes that we've been talking about, to make sure we get those, do a public hearing and move forward. So I'll work with Kevin to see what our schedules are looking like coming up, and try and get those, get a, get that onto a night that will be here, if it looks like time will work, to try not to take up another night for everybody. Or maybe we come in half an hour early and do a public hearing for that part of it, and start to be seven afterwards. I did just see, there was a, the email that came out that from New Hampshire DOT, talking about the bridge replacement on one fifty-two, and it's seeking, I guess, input from multiple levels, including the planning board. So I would say if you have specific comments, please have to be, I'll consolidate them, and I'll send it from the chair position to official view to get consolidated with any other town comments on that.
The Conservation Commission has wrapped up the river testing program called VRAP, Volunteer River Assessment Program. Again, we had four volunteers from the community, and we were able to test twice a month from June through the month of September. And we were one of the few communities that did do testing more frequently than once a month in the state of New Hampshire. And the commission is going to be picking up trash on one fifty-six and one fifty-two, I think it's next week.
Next weekend?
No, it's usually on Monday, like after drive time, but just to get that information out there that we do.
I was just going to volunteer on a Saturday, but I can't do it.
Well, just don't throw the trash out now.
Every time they go by my house, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to the commission for.
So what rivers do you test, what rivers were being tested?
The North River in two locations, McCrillis and Freedman Hall, down by where Larry used to live. And then also Smoke Street, where that development was going to go in.
Okay, the Little River?
Little River, yes, yes.
Over there, okay.
That's a very pristine Little River, well, so is the North River too.
Yeah, the state relies on that.
Two of the biggest rivers in town, so it would be.
I'm sorry?
The two of the biggest rivers in town, so.
Oh, and very important to the watershed.
Yeah. Yeah, the state relies on that volunteer commitment to, obviously, they can't monitor with the staff that they have, that, all those locations, but they, the data is key to identifying trend, long-term trends, as well as they could see if there's a spot change, and we'll work on it more quickly.
The, of another comment about the Smoke Street site, Little River, one of the bat studies was done at that site, and they found quite a few different species of bats, just in that area. That was, Land River Advisory Committee got the grant to do the bat study, so they're very cool, very cool.
Thank you, Ms. Sandler?
Thank you.
Mr. Haney?
Yes, I just want to reiterate something that I had sent out, I believe it was late last week, Thursday. There is a training opportunity, this is just a particularly good one, it's land use law. So it's very applicable to what you all do here and in some of your other boards, right, Conservation? So, and because of the most recent change in legislation, these things are now open, available to alternates as well, so you all are welcome to join them. However, everybody here, if you do want to do this, it is a seventy dollar fee, I don't know if the town covers that or not, if you have to do that at your own expense, but it is a registration fee of seventy dollars. It's Saturday, October fifteenth, from nine to three PM. And this is an online event, so you can do it in your PJs if you want to. But it's, you know, mostly an all-day event, there's a bunch of different speakers, some are live, some are pre-recorded. But, you know, it's, there's definitely a few things in there that everybody could benefit, myself included, right? Land use law is complex, and it's always changing, so giving yourself a good foundation of understanding, you just build on it over a career, that's just how it is.
If anybody's interested in that, please email myself at CCKevin, just so we have, because we'll have to approve the, approve the expenditure, I think, I'm sure we have money in the training budget, part of our budget, because I don't think we've used any of it this year, so I see, I foresee funds being available, so if it's that you're interested in, would like to attend, please just email me, and we'll make sure that's all squared away.
I'm sorry?
Six.
Oh, six hours, thank you.
It's nine to three.
Nine to three, okay.
Who's, who's doing that?
Oh, it's the New Hampshire Municipal Association, is the lead organization, and the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development. So, you know, New Hampshire MA has a lot of good people that. people that work with them, consult with them, and they do a lot of the speaking. The planning office obviously has a greater interest in this. I talk about the Municipal Association because if you go to their, I think it's like their newsletter or their blog, it's a great resource. I go to it all the time. And my experience for almost 20 years was in Massachusetts land use law, right? So I'm learning a lot up here. And it's just, whenever I Google search a question about New Hampshire land use law, I tend to end up back at some type of blog that they have posted about, you know, ways to handle writing good conditions, or, you know, how to make a good motion, things like that, right? Like there's, there's ways to do things, there's legal ways to do things, there's good practices and stuff. So I have just found myself ending up on their, you know, whatever it is, like I said, their blog or their newsletter, so.
Could we get a link sent to us? Is it possible to have a link sent?
Yep, yep. I sent it out last week. I'll send it out again, because I am bringing it up again, and I'll make sure that you all see it, and I'll make sure that I know that this is what we talked about.
I also have the blog part of it, too.
Oh, to that? Yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Hundred percent, yep.
Is there any further, Mr. Mooney? So I see we have plans set this side?
Larry, did you happen to get a chance to look at that? Okay. I know, so we didn't talk while I was like.
I know.
I managed to remind you, too, so.
Escaped me. I'm sorry. I'll get on it immediately.
So it's for K. Monk?
So just having a chance to review if the conditions are.
Yeah, well, last time we talked, it was because of the conditions were so.
Like the?
Wrong.
Sure.
Like 11, you know, and some of the stuff I wasn't familiar with.
Yep. Sure, yeah, we'll make sure we get that, if you can, we get to that for the 12th. That'd be great. Anything else for us? No. Motion to adjourn, anybody?
I still move.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. You have a wonderful, great night.